We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a pledge of the flag. Everyone join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. No Christmas gift over there. Nope. Golly. Okay. The first thing on our agenda is a swearing in ceremony and reception for police officer Joseph Serra III. I would have worn a tie if I--
I apologize. Joe, come on, join me, please.
And you want me over there?
Sure.
Instead of Dick?
Yes.
You guys go stand in front of the TV.
Yes. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. This is a very happy night for us to swear in Joe, who's been with us for a little bit. He started working for us part-time, transitioned out to a full-time role. He's been in a field training program. It's nice to do his official swearing in now. Joe comes to us, grew up in the Rome area, went to Rome Free High School, got a two-year degree from Mohawk Valley Community College, and started his law enforcement career down Hampton, Virginia, where he worked as a police officer for nearly two years down there. He has a fiancee and a child that are with him tonight, along with other family and friends, and some of his coworkers have joined us as well. And he's wanted to come back to central New York and continue his career, and we're happy to have him in Baldensville. Sergeant Gwynne did his background, did a good job on that. And some things since that time, however, have come to light that have caused us to kind of reevaluate what we're going to do for future background examinations. A couple of weeks ago, we were in the police department, self-will of us, and it was determined that Joe had never seen Die Hard. And then when he commented to that, he said, "Well, not when we enter old movies." So then we got a transition, and I asked him about Clint Eastwood, and he kind of looked at me funny, and he said, "Well, he was in Grand Trino, right?" So we asked him about Dirty Harry, and he'd never heard about Dirty Harry at all and didn't know about that. And then yesterday or today, I heard that two other things, one being that you don't particularly care for bacon, you're not really sure what the big deal about bacon is. And then he's never had a Snickers bar. Is that an accurate assumption? We're going to look at our hiring practices, see if we need to make any changes. But in the meantime, Joe's with us, and we're really happy about that. And our deputy mayor, Bruce Stebbins, is here. I'm going to ask you to turn and raise your right hand. Actually, I'm going to do the swearing in, because I don't think Bruce don't have a word. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joseph Serra III.
I, Joseph Serra III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties--
I will faithfully discharge the duties--
--of the office of police officer--
The office of police officer--
--to the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Well, I'll be with the bait and then I'll take the bar.
One word of advice: Don't mention RFA on Friday nights during football.
We do have cake. We ask everyone to join us for a certain celebration to congratulate Joe on his joining our department. Thank you.
Does Mark not know that it's the job of the treasurer to be cut back your cutting cake? Because that was Anna always-- Anna was the official cake cutter. Did she not tell you that that was part of your job?
You're very good at budgeting how much each person needs.
But I have a motion approving the village board minutes from meeting November 17, 2022.
I'll second.
Any additions, corrections, deletions? I don't know if you can do that. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Don't have to ask for opposition, because there's a majority. If you've ever watched Congress, does that too? I can't tell the difference between the ayes and the nays in the past. Public comment. This is your opportunity, public. Come to the mic, tell us your name, where you live, and what your business tonight is.
Hi. My name is Sally. I live on Mechanic Street.
Haven't moved, huh?
I, no. It's my 31st resident, eight states and two countries. So I hate moving, just for the record. Baldensville's the longest I've ever lived in any place. We'll take it. I had a question. Is the vote tonight about the zoning change just R1 to R2, or is it also going to be considering the PPD? Because it only says R1 to R2.
That's what it says on here. I'd have to defer to our attorney.
Well, that is the local law that's before the board.
Okay. But are they voting on the PPD tonight, or--
Have to wait until that determination comes up and they make--
Because there isn't one, so there's--
Right.
Okay. But there won't be a vote without a public comment, or should I make all my--
If there's a-- If the application comes back, or if it's modified one way or the other, and it's changed sufficiently to go from R2 to PPD, or new comes in for PPD, there would be public hearings.
Okay. So I don't need to make-- I don't need to say anything other than, please don't change the zoning?
You can say that.
Because I'm also against the PPD. But I have specific questions that I wasn't allowed to ask last time, so I want to make sure I don't lose my window for asking.
You can ask-- Is it questions of the board you can ask?
Well, it's just things I think should be kept in mind before voting for, or, you know--
Sally, you have the floor for the next three minutes. Go for it.
When the traffic study was done for the Philip Street project, my understanding was it was done the last day of school, and I feel like a one-day study is not adequate, especially the last day of school. How many staff would be on site each day to help the 18 residents in the apartments for people who have challenges? And in the planning board, they discussed that they thought 1.5 spaces per unit would be adequate. But in a heavy snowfall, you can lose up to a third of a parking lot to snow, and then they would be significantly short of parking spaces. As someone who lived in a park, an apartment, I speak from experience.
Okay. I will speak from the experience of having plowed parking lots. You shouldn't lose a third of it.
I'm just-- Have you, you know--
I understand what you're saying, but-- Hamburg did last week, but--
They lost 100%.
But that was my big concerns. But we just-- Unless there's, you know, corrections to the traffic problems that we have currently, I just think it's a bad idea to be adding anything else to the traffic problem. Oh, and also, with the increased capacity, are the fire department, the ambulance, wardens, you know, is everybody ready for that kind of increase that we seem to be moving in?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to trustees comments. I think I started with Nate last time, so Eric begin.
I'll stick to the agenda.
You've never started with me, ever.
Well, you can sit in the end.
If that means that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I am also sticking to the agenda. Thank you.
I'm going to add an item to the agenda. It's going to be item F, discussion action regarding a resolution to support the grant application to Onondah County for the Main Street Revitalization Program, which they've extended again. Other than that, I'll go stick to the agenda also.
Oh, just a couple of things. I just wanted to say a big shout out and thank you to the DPW and Chuck McAuliffe and, oh, let me see. Now, who else do I want to say thank you to?
I know, I know one person.
I know somebody. Mike Lockwood with the-- and the chief as well with the police department. Jeff Bordwell, that's-- he saved the lights that night. Also, Jason Newman was the DJ. Beeville Diner with Jim Orlando, the Chamber of Commerce. Let me see. The fire department, obviously, and the towns of Lysander and Van Buren. So just a heartfelt thanks to everybody. Also to Mo, too, for helping out as well, you know, pointing me in the right direction in a couple of things. But other than that, I think we had a nice evening.
For the viewers' sake--
Yes.
I'm going to be obnoxious. Can you tell them what you're thanking these folks for?
I thought I said it at the beginning.
Did you?
Yeah. The parade of lights and the tree lighting on Saturday. So anyways, yes.
It was a good time.
It was a very nice time. The weather cooperated for a change, so it was a very huge turnout, so.
Yeah.
Other than that, just the agenda.
And outside of, you know, let's go Buffalo tonight, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Mayor, you're up.
I have just a couple of things. Mo and I had been discussing a while back about the possibility of highlighting new businesses, or maybe a business you've gone to that you hadn't gone to yet, that is, may not be brand new, but it's new to you, and you had a great experience, and you'd like people to know about it. So start thinking for future meetings of businesses in the village that you'd like to highlight, especially new businesses. For instance, I know that Angry--
Smokehouse.
Angry Smokehouse is looking for employees, so they must be getting ready to open, and that's kind of exciting. So that if you know anybody that would like to work in a barbecue joint, that'd be, it sounds like a great place to work. I would too echo what Ruth said about the parade and the tree lighting. Went off great. The weather was perfect for that night, as far as-- not perfect as far as Christmas spirit, but perfect as far as having to stand outside and not freeze to death. There were some small problems. I know a lot of comments about trash and on the village. We've got to do something about that. But overall, I think people went home satisfied, they saw a great parade, the tree lighting worked great. Thanks to Jeff Bordwell, somebody had done some hijinks with the electrical stuff at the tree, and Jeff was able to splice things together in time for the tree to be lit. So as usual, our DPW is talented and goes through and saves the day. I know the police were all over the village. DPW people were all over the village, blocking streets. It went great. I would probably be a part of it. Also, the turkey trot went very well for the most part. With everything, there's some issues, and I'm sure they'll get worked out. Chief and I have talked about a couple of things. But a lot of people went by, and my host and kin were with for the 5K, and they all seemed to be having a good time and enjoying Thanksgiving morning. And it's a great tradition. I hope that the quaduses able to keep it going forever. Other than that, I have nothing, except I'm glad there's no snow.
Okay. Moving on to our department heads. Start with our attorney.
I'll stick with the agenda and also say I'm glad there's no snow.
I'm glad the winds we had weren't going over the lake in our direction. Moving on to village clerk.
I too will stick to the agenda.
Freshroom?
Just one quick thing. I have all the budgets from the departments in hand, and I'll spend the next couple of days putting those together. And what you can expect, I sent you an email today about it, but you can expect a packet from me by Monday morning in your email, and I'll put a hard copy in your mail slots here, too. And then I look forward to meeting on Tuesday night. The rest is agenda. I have one agenda item. If there's anything you need to ask me about it at that time, I'll field those on.
Okay. Thank you. Senior Senator, Ruth.
A lot going on at the senior center right now, especially with the holiday season upon us. Tomorrow is the first day of our craft sale, so Friday and Saturday, craft sale this weekend, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and see all the nice things that they've been working on throughout the year. Tomorrow, also at 3:00 PM, we'll be doing our own tree lighting. There's village singers will be there to provide some musical entertainment. We'll have refreshments, and then that program's at 3:00, and then we light the outdoor tree around 4:00 o'clock, so if you want to join us for that, please stop by. And next week, on Wednesday, December 7, the Baldensville Community Band will be playing at the senior center at 7:00 PM, and public's all welcome to come and join us for that. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent of Public Works, Chuck McGough.
Well, we're done brush pickup, finally. That went pretty well. It went right up till this week there. We're pretty much into full winter mode. I want to thank the crews. The last few weeks have been pretty busy between getting all the Christmas decorations out, getting everything up, everything up. And also, for the holiday weekend, we had to have employees come in. Thanksgiving Day, you know, they had to come in and put a bunch of the cones out. We used the blocker trucks, and they had to come back in again and move all the cones and move the barricades for the Christmas lighting. Then we had a bunch of folks in for that. I want to thank Lysander. Lysander sent a couple of the plow trucks for blockers. Van Buren also sent a couple of their-- some of their plow trucks for blockers. The big plow trucks really seemed to make a big difference. I think we had a total of seven of them with an additional truck. And that went very well, but it takes a lot of time out of, you know, their busy schedule, especially in a holiday weekend. But I also-- I've had a hand in running some events, and I was privy to hear the police side of the communications for everything that went on there, and I'm glad I wasn't running it, because there was a lot of communication, a lot of streets that were blocked off, and I think it went very well for what it was. And just kudos to the people that, you know, the police and-- I couldn't hear the fire department side, but I heard the police side, and they coordinated with the fire police, and it went very well. Also, in the past, we had-- we would come in on Sundays to try to clean up. We did not do that this year. The fire department actually sent people back in to pick up a lot of the stuff in the four corners, and that was just great, because there was a messer, and they got up and they got that cleaned up. I know Jeff Bordwell was one of them, and they had some help, and they scheduled people in and did some of the cleanup for us. So it was a great event. It was a big event. It was just-- it was a busy weekend, and I just want to thank everybody that was involved, including, you know, my people up there. Other than that, I'm all set.
It's very disappointing that so many people felt that dumping their stuff on the street wasn't appropriate behavior. I don't think it has anything to do with whether we had trash cans available or not. It was just poor behavior.
Right. No doubt.
Did-- I wanted to ask, did you have a chance to talk to Bob and Mark regarding the insulation project?
We--
In terms of whether we need any board action?
Oh, I did not. No, we did not, because I wasn't really sure of--
Okay. They just got a price to-- out of the-- would be out of the bond thing, and I hope you're listening, Mr. Mayor, to complete the insulation on the building. And I don't know if-- since that's already within the bond, if you need any action by the board to authorize them to go ahead?
No, because that's-- the only action by the board would be relative to RFPs or bonding-- I'm not bonding, but getting bids or whatever, as far as getting something to do it. But the expenditure of the funds, it's already been approved.
And we have a quote, the only quote Greg's been able to get out for a year or so.
For Village Hall?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So Chuck, just to get together with Mark and Dick and--
Yeah, and the reason that the agenda items in here tonight and that bond is just kind of as an informational thing to bring the board up to speed on what's left in that bond, those bond funds, and how they're allocated. And have you-- you know, I have a common understanding of what's left and what we're able to do in there. So when this project is done, it will change that, and I'll probably just give you an FYI memo about that, too, just so you kind of know what's there.
Because I know Chuck and Greg were-- in our meeting, were, what do we have to do to get this to move?
I just wasn't real sure. I hadn't heard that part of the money. But we did go over with our engineer at the public works, and he said, "That's really money well spent if we can get that done, and we'll make our money back just from the heat loss that we're going to take care of." So obviously, if we can get the money, that's-- we can push a button.
What's the quote within the--
No.
--allocation?
We need more monies than originally came in that grant, but they're going to come up with it.
But it's not-- it fits within what you said.
Yeah. I think when we're done taking Main Street out of that, there'll be like 65,000 or 64,000 left of those bond funds. So as long as it's within that--
It is.
Okay.
Then we have to allocate though.
Right.
Okay. Unless some of the board members have any questions about what I'm talking about. Move on to codes to Greg.
I think I'll stick with the agenda.
Ah. Then we'll move to our police officers. Ready for my glove and check?
I will not.
All right.
Just a few things. First, you might have seen a number of our officers with beards. We've participated in No Shave November. Each person is-- myself included, I've just continued to shave. Donated $50, and we're going to donate that to a local charity, and we'll do a photo op with them. And I've actually just issued a memo allowing them to continue to wear the beards through the end of March, and I'll evaluate that grooming standard over the next few months, as a matter of fact. So if you were questioning why that was, that's the reason for that, but it was a nice opportunity to have the folks do that. And then for the female officers, we allowed them to paint their nails kind of whatever color they would like and wear a ponytail. So I know one of the officers, she started out, she kind of had them painted as like five different colors. She goes, "I couldn't decide," so I just did like two nails each different color, and then she had a Christmas tree or a turkey on one of the nails. So she's done a couple of things, and so they can wear ponytails. So that's a nice thing, and I appreciate everyone participating. We're going to donate some money to a local charity once I talk to the director of that charity. You all know who it is. Last week, we had a situation where there was a woman and her husband walking a dog along the Southwest Trail, and somebody she performed, the dog ended up into the Seneca River, and then the woman ended up in the Seneca River trying to get the dog out of said river. Obviously, very cold. It doesn't take long for hypothermia to start to kick in, loss of motor function. Two of our officers, Officer Serra, as a matter of fact, Officer McCallum, and then a member of the sheriff's office, Sergeant Kate Loveland, they all responded over there. We carry throw bags in our car, which have bags in them with rope. We were able to get the rope down to her, and ultimately, through some good teamwork, we got the dog out and got her out. And it was really good teamwork on the part of the three responding people. One of the things we noted over there is that over along the Southwest Trail there, if someone is-- happens to be in the water there, there's no ladders, permanent ladders to get out. So Chuck and I have already had some conversation about that, and I had a conversation with Public Safety Committee about the potentiality of something being put over there for us to be able to direct people towards or drag people towards if we have a rope, or if one of our officers were to fall out of there. We did lose a body camera that's in the Seneca River if someone wants to go search it for that during that rescue. And I could see on one of the other body cameras when Officer McCallum went in, he said, "Oh, the chief's going to be real happy about that," during the middle of the rescue attempt. But I told him, "That's the least of our worries. The main thing is get the people out of the water," and they did a great job at that. Echo Chuck's comments and trustee Seago's comments about the turkey trot and the parade of lights. Lieutenant Mike Lockwood does a really tremendous job planning, writing the operational plan, coordination, and putting those things together. For the turkey trot, I actually work a command post. Mike kind of floats around and makes sure everything is squared away. For the parade of lights-- or turkey trot, I work a traffic post. For the parade of lights, I'm in the command post. So I don't get to really see any of it, other than what's on the stick camera. It'll night in the Swiggo Street and watch the parade go by. So other than pictures, which I saw a number of Chuck's pictures, to see what the size of the crowds are, which are immense. We did have some hiccups in both of those events that we're going to address, that we want to take care of. Happens every year, no matter what amount of planning you have, things are going to happen that you say, "Okay, we need to change some things for the future years." Obviously, the parade of lights, the weather impacted that. It's a sizable event. From the point in time the first truck pulled out of the parking lot of the fire department to the point in time Santa made his way onto Denio Street was an hour and 29 minutes. So we're looking at a 90-minute parade right now. That's a long time. And then we stopped traffic 15 minutes beforehand. So, you know, we're talking an hour 45 to two hours of stopping traffic through the center of the village. All hands are on deck for our organization. We don't allow anyone off, obviously, on that Saturday. And if they're not working, they're ordered in. So it's a lot of processes go through that. It's a lot involved. The communication can get a little hectic in the command post, because you've got multiple people sometimes calling for police officers or additional assistance at different traffic posts. But everything went well, but still some things for us to address, and I brought those up to Public Safety. But certainly want to thank Chuck and his crew, because those plow trucks do provide a level of safety for participants in there that otherwise we wouldn't have.
So if Route 31 and Route 370 from the east coming into town are closed for two hours, does the cars just stop and sit there, or are there signs--
Well, that's some of the things we need to address, is really what we're going to do. Mike and I have already talked about having maybe some DOT signs to direct people around, because if people need to get to the south side of the village in there here in Baldensville, there's only two other ways for them to go. One is to go all the way back to John Glenn, and the other is to get themselves to 690, which really necessitates them getting over to Philip Street and getting up to 60 Road, you know, and then over Henkel Boulevard. People that are not familiar with the area probably don't even know that exists. So those are some issues that we need to address as well, along with some other staffing and manpower issues that we'll have conversations with the fire department regarding. So, you know, the event has kind of really exploded in growth, which is not a bad thing, but with growth comes growing pains inevitably. And, you know, when it started, it was not this long. We weren't shutting traffic down on a Saturday night. It's dark. You know, some nights it's rainy and dreary. This one was nice, but it's still dark. People are trying to find their way, and it presents issues in and of itself. So we've talked about having some signage in and around the village, even leading up to the parade, letting people know and reminding them that it's going to be going on. You know, even with the turkey trot having occurred every year since I've been working here, people still forget that it happens, and, you know, people come along, and even at my traffic post down by the right angle, they're like, "What am I missing?" I'm like, "That's the turkey trot. You kind of need to move along here, please, because you're holding up traffic." But so there's some people that don't know, so we can maybe educate some folks and try and do a better job. We've got a whole list of things that we're going to look at and try and do. But a lot goes into it. Really have to give a lot of credit to Mike Lockwood. He does a really good job. Any comments or questions on anything else?
He turned down food at the fire barn. He was so intent.
Well, no. I mean, literally, Mike was in his office, because there were people that didn't show that were supposed to show from other organizations, typing up things, printing them out and handing it to me, so I knew in the command post like at 5:00 minutes after 5:00. And then I had to get to the command post, because we shut traffic down at 5:15, and it's my responsibility to start to coordinate that. So we were really running right on the number. We're going to make some-- So we, we were, we were really running right on the number. We're going to make some significant changes so that doesn't happen in the future. But, um, we'll, we'll be doing some other things.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, real quick, uh, the incident with the dog, was that on whose property there? Was that more of the Canal Authority's property or the?
Well, it was on the Southwest Trail and along the wall there, along the trail. So who owns that, Chuck?
We leased that part, but the wall itself belongs to the state.
Yeah, so.
So I just know there's talk of putting a ladder on. That might be something we'd have to go through with the state to do that.
Yeah, we talked about that. I'm not really sure what, 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 what that would entail. Um, you know, we've never had this issue before, but we certainly don't want to have it again where we couldn't get somebody out of there.
Yeah, I just want people to realize it's not just as simple as us putting a ladder.
No, absolutely not. No, there's, there's imagination.
Expect that the Canal Authority in other communities has stuff on their wall.
That came up in our Public Safety Committee as well as, you know, is there something over in Phoenix or what might there be in place at other locales? Um, and, and it's something that we could certainly bring to their attention.
Yeah.
They put on the radar to, to have addressed.
We also discussed, not just on the Southwest Trail, but if you go down the Water Street side, too, there's a long stretch there. That's a wall that, so we're discussing the extent of how many ladders would be appropriate.
Something for us to look at and consider and we can work cooperatively, Chuck, myself, Greg, and, and see what's appropriate. And, you know, this happened. Uh, we certainly if it happens again, don't want to be in the same position, uh, looking at that video, which I will show this board in due course. Um, you know, our, our officers are right there along the wall. Uh, the officer is leaning over. People have his gun belt holding on to him so he doesn't fall in. Um, you know, it, it was a good, good job of teamwork there to, 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 to save her life and the dogs.
Yeah, who's share that?
I will. We have to do some auditing with it because.
I made some contact with the state canal corps. The person that I normally contact is moved to a new position, but I got another name. And I will contact them to see about the possibility of, of a couple of ladders being installed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to pending business. Item A, revisit the proposed local law changing the zoning district of property located at nineteen Philip Street, Tax Map Parcel Zero Zero Five Dot Dash Zero One Dash Zero Three Dot One, from the current designation of R One Residential Zoning District to the R Two Residential Zoning District. I'll make a motion.
What are you moving?
No.
So we're open for discussion regardless of motions.
The last time I knew, the motion was that. There was a motion to change it from R One to R Two, correct? This just doesn't.
Right, but we don't really have a motion. At this point, you're just going to discuss whether or not you're going to.
Prove it.
I'll make a motion to change it from R One to R Two.
And I'll tell you what, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Right now in front of us, we're going from our only option, R One to R Two. That's the only thing that's officially been presented to us to move on.
That is correct. You could say yes, no, or amend.
So that's where we're at.
Okay. So does anyone have anything they would like to share with each other?
I could, um, if you don't mind, I, I have a few comments, but also I could address a few of the comments that were made earlier just to make sure that there is a direct response, if that's appropriate at this time.
Sure.
I don't need to interrupt, whatever you'd like to. Uh, I just wanted to speak just to make sure that there was some clarity given for a couple of the questions that were raised earlier. Uh, with regard to the traffic study, uh, there was ninety-five percent occupancy or attendance at the school that day. I believe it's reflected in the traffic study. But, um, that's what we were, that's the data that we were given. Um, and again, that traffic study was for double the number of units that we're proposing. Um, we could certainly do, uh, a study account on a separate day if, uh, if the village would like to see that, uh, as we continue to go through this process. Um, and then with regard to, uh, the parking and snow storage, we typically put a snow storage space, um, in, uh, the parking lot for all of our developments. Um, and we recently did a traffic study, um, or a parking study, rather, for one of our developments and saw it at about fifty percent, uh, capacity, uh, on average. Uh, and that's with a development that has one parking space per unit. So just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity there, uh, on those points. Um, and then I also did share, uh, with Greg, and I believe he shared it with the board, and I brought some hard copies tonight, uh, a couple of figures that I think are, are relevant. Um, and, and just some, some key points, um, about the development itself and some benefits that I think that it may bring to the community. Um, one point that I wanted to touch on specifically, Mr. Ryan Eagle, I apologize if I pronounced that correctly.
You nailed it.
Great. Um, you asked a good question last time about taxes. So I went back and took a look at our budget. Uh, we are able to make the project work without tax abatement. Again, it is something that would improve our application to the state for capital funds, but we would be able to make it work without tax abatement. And we would be bringing in taxes of approximately eighty to ninety thousand dollars a year for the project. Um, that is an estimate because it's based off of the revenue for the project, but that's a pretty good projection because our revenue is pretty locked in based off the state's rates for rental rates. Um, and then a little bit of clarity, uh, I know I gave some estimates last time, but I wanted to give some more specifics. The proposed rents for this would be seven hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, up to twelve hundred and sixty dollars a month. Uh, and the estimated household incomes would range from thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for household income for one person, a household of one person, uh, all the way up to seventy-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars for a household, uh, up to four individuals. So again, this is kind of that middle income tier, um, for folks who do have income, um, but, uh, it's difficult sometimes for them to find quality housing, um, at market rates. Um, so that's what we're trying to achieve here. And our market analysis has shown that that is needed in the immediate area. There would be folks from the local community who would need that housing, who are currently in need of that housing. And again, um, to some of the concerns that were raised before, it would be heavily state-regulated, managed by a third-party professional property management company. Um, and under a fifty-year term to be appropriately maintained, managed, um, for this population, uh, during that whole term, regardless of who owns it. Not that CDS has any intention to get out of the business. Um, if anything, we're expanding our, our footprint in this field. Few final things and then I will leave it in case there are any other questions. Um, we would be bringing in approximately twenty-three million dollars in state funding. Three million of that is already secured. Um, and we work with a general contractor who would work with local subcontractors. So a lot of those funds would go towards our construction roughly, I don't know, somewhere from fifteen to about eighteen million of that budget would be a construction budget. And that would be work going to local Syracuse area subcontractors. Um, and then once the development is up and running, uh, there will be three, um, uh, permanent employees on the site. There would be a property manager who would handle the day-to-day, um, taking in rents, uh, addressing any resident concerns. There would be a maintenance supervisor who would handle the mechanical systems, any maintenance issues with the property. And there would be a case manager specifically for the individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities, and they would all have offices on site. So, hey, those are a few of the things that I wanted to just.
Some would be residential, though, would they?
No, they wouldn't live in the development, no.
Mr. Dr. P, I got an opportunity to go out to Webster and, uh, look at your two properties there. And, uh, those are about, you know, ten years old, the one, you know, and it is well-maintained. I was happy to see that. But I was struck by how different that area is compared to the Village of Baldwinsville.
Yeah.
You know, it was easy for me just to get off One Oh Four, hop there.
Sure.
The one in Cicero was easy to hop off Eighty-One. I almost feel like on the other side of the village, this project might more, make more sense by Six Ninety or something. But, you know, I sit there and I look at the zoning map of our village and it was set up in twenty-seventeen with these zoning districts in place. And we have a finite amount of land is what strikes me is sometimes have a lot more land to play with.
Sure.
Once we develop this land, that is it. And so I look at that and I do have a concern about how we're developing our land and with the, the amount of properties, you know, we have a lot of development that's going to be coming in in the coming years is already being proposed in this area, too. We have Micron coming in. We have an opportunity to, to develop land and we have to kind of, at least my opinion, we have to maximize what we're doing. I personally love what you guys do with affordable housing. Uh, you're trying to find a good school district to put it in. I appreciate that. That's, the, working with people with developmental challenges, that is awesome. Really support all that, but, you know, for other reasons, I have a hard time, you know, supporting this project. I'm sort of put on the record right now.
No, appreciate the candor.
Yeah, um, I will speak to a couple of those. No, I respect that's your opinion and that's, you know, you're here to represent the residents. So I'm, I'm sure some residents may share similar concerns. From our perspective, um, we did see it as easy access to main thoroughfares, obviously easy access to the local downtown village. And, uh, yes, those projects in Webster are fantastic projects, very well-maintained. Um, our offices are actually right next door. You should let me know. You could.
I said hello.
But, uh, the state has moved toward, uh, more of an integrated community field. They want individuals in these settings to be able to live in walkable districts. They want them to be able to walk into a village setting. They want to be able to walk into school, you know, because some of these folks may not drive or may not feel safe driving, especially for some of the IDD individuals. So, uh, the, the state is prioritizing more of trying to create these developments in an area where they're more easily connected, uh, to different local amenities. So that's, that's part of the reason for that. And also, if they were to have a car, it, it's not a very difficult, uh, connection for them to get to some of them.
And I'll tell you, I mean, being a, a, a village resident who walks this community a lot, I mean, a lot of our resources are on the other side of that river, which would be reachable to these people.
Gotcha.
It is not easy and necessary to walk this village. I wish, wish it was safer at times, but it is a challenge at times and, uh, that actual street that you're on, my, my own son, you know, like I watched him the one day almost get hit by a car because he wasn't being careful.
Sure.
You know, I, you just hate to see stuff like, you know, on the other side of the village, it's a different.
Sure.
It's different with the space over there. Be some of this, it's the particular location. Because when I asked you before, why did you choose this location? You said because it's a good school district, but I, I really mean that location. Because there's a lot of good school districts in this area you guys can choose from as well. That particular location's a concern for me.
Well, it also has to do with the size of the site and the fact that it's a reasonable price, which is difficult to find. And I think part of the reason why it's a reasonable price is because it's a site that for a very long time, to my knowledge, no time in the recent, uh, past, has been developed, uh, because it's very difficult to develop and market that site as a, as a single-family home lot, um, given the fact that it's an interior site, uh, with some challenges due to the grading. But understand and appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I don't want to speak to the whole board, so feel free. I.
I'm biting it. Hey, I'm going to echo Eric and commend you for your proposal. From my vantage point, timing is, is critical. And we're at a point where we have already approved projects online that whether Morgan ever gets his act together or not, somebody will. And my concern is how many apartment complexes can the village absorb before we change the character of the village? And it's no longer Baldwinsville, it's now Liverpool, um, or something like that. Um, that's a concern for me. And, and I wish we knew where, how quickly Lock Street was going to come online, how quickly Morgan was going to come online, how quickly Smokey Hollow is going to come online, so we could actually see our community and know, can we deal with this without changing Baldwinsville? That's my concern is that I'm, I do, I think it's my job to protect the character of the existing community as much as looking into the future. And my concern, I'm not sold in myself that a, another apartment complex of any sort is in the best interests of our talent right now.
Certainly. Well, I would speak to that through the market study and the fact that we would only need seven percent of the primary market area to fill this, to say that there are folks here who need it. Um, regardless of whether or not, um, these other developments are successful or not, there will still be a tremendous need here for, for people who are in this community already. Um, and I think the quality of what we produce, um, would be far superior to what they, what their other options may be, um, if a development like this doesn't proceed. Um, and seven percent is a very, very low figure. So even if those other developments are extremely successful, which I hope they are, um, I think there's still more than adequate demand and need for people in this community already. And it's, and it's a question of what, what quality are they going to receive? And I think, uh, especially with a development like Micron, that's only going to become, uh, more of a concern of, you know, what, what kind of quality can a community deliver and to have over twenty million dollars of state funds to help deliver that, I, I think would be a benefit for the village. But I understand that's my perspective. Um, uh, but that's, I appreciate the candor.
I can say from my perspective, I was an apartment dweller myself for at least two-thirds of my adult life. And I, I am not opposed to apartments in the, in the village if they're done right. I, I, what's in front of us now, moving from R One to R Two, I, I don't see that as the right move. Um, but I think with the planning board's expertise and guidance and, and helping to develop an appropriate, um, development of that space, I would, I would be okay with, you know, if the right, um, proposal is presented to us. So I don't, I don't have the issues with apartment residents not fitting in with our community.
Appreciate that. And, and I would like to kind of piggyback on that to state that, um, to your point, uh, we, we do want to make sure that it meets the character of the neighborhood. When we first met with, with, uh, the mayor and Greg and John Tenello, uh, in February of this year to discuss this potential project, uh, one of the main things that they highlighted to us was, you know, um, apartments may be appropriate for the site, given the size of the site, but they would want apartments that match with the aesthetic of the neighborhood, match with the character of the neighborhood, the feel of the neighborhood. Um, and that's why we proposed to them more of a townhome-style feel. We've done similar style apartments successfully in the, in, in other areas. Um, so that was how we arrived where we did. And I think to your point, working with the planning board, we could develop something that's not going to be some sort of massive, you know, standalone four or five-story apartment complex, but rather, um, a townhome-style building. So it still meets the need of what folks need in terms of housing that they can afford, um, but it doesn't destroy that character that you're speaking of that gives Baldwinsville the feel that it has, uh, the, the village feel of a, of a, of a community, of a small community. So that's the process that we want to work through, uh, through the PDD process as opposed to the R Two. And I, I agree with you and I think it's a, I think it's a well-stated point that to put it to R Two would open you up to much more, uh, leeway for us or anyone else to do anything. So the PDD would then put us through a process where we would have to work in lockstep with what the planning board wants to see to make sure that it does meet the character of what you want Baldwinsville to remain.
That's kind of what I'm interested in, too, because I, I know how I feel about the R One, R Two thing. I also know how I feel about your original plan that you presented. And I could see through a PDD where something could be acceptable with some changes.
Sure.
Like I noticed with Bruce, you were building the front half of that, leaving that back half for a potential Phase Two. I, I would like to see that flipped around, giving more of a buffer between the homes and the development. That may cost you more money. That's something that could be worked out.
It's something that we can explore and something that we've worked with our, our civil, our civil team to, to kind of kick the tires on a bit. And it's definitely something we could do. And, you know, I will state the fact that because this site is so large, um, there is an opportunity to subdivide it. Um, you know, I don't know if the community would be interested in having a portion of it as maintained green space to try to maintain the character in perpetuity or anything of that nature. But those are discussions that we could have as well. Um, and when we went to show a theoretical Phase Two, it was just that. It was a theoretical Phase Two to make sure that anything that we were doing or may do in the future would be done in full transparency. Um, but, you know, similar to the discussion. You know, similar to the discussion we had on tax abatement, if the village were to say, we're not going to ever entertain a phase two, then we would honor that because we would know that well in advance. And that, and in no way is a deal breaker for what we're trying to achieve here with these 70 units. We think the 70 units are appropriate for 15 acres and we certainly could explore the back half of the site if that fits with the character and the aesthetic and meets the need without disrupting the neighborhood in terms of the feel of the neighborhood. Yeah, I think that's, I think that sort of conversation is what we want to have with the planning board.
So I, I think I know where I stand on the, on the motion in front of us. Moving forward though, with a, with a PDD thing, I would be interested in seeing what you could come up with, with the planning board that would be more palatable to what Bruce's comments were.
Anybody else want to have anything they'd like to express? Nate, Ruth, Dick?
Everything's been said for me that these, you know, said already. And it's not that I, I think the project is nice, but I just don't like the location per se. Because I think, you know, people on a limited income, you know, it would be more beneficial for them to be closer to the type of amenities that they could use, like a grocery store, what, you know what I mean? That kind of thing. That's my concern.
Sure, sure. Sometimes the difficulty with that is finding an appropriate site at an appropriate price point that's large enough. And I will say to the, to the point earlier, this, this is closer than we typically get just because the price that you some, the price point that you see to be in the center of a, a community at a large enough lot to develop something like this is very difficult. So this is, well, not potentially ideal walkable. It's, it's a significant improvement from what we've been able to find in the past and what you're able to make work for some of these projects, unfortunately. So it is, it would be a good selling point on, from our perspective. I understand, I understand what you're saying and, and get it, but.
Unfortunately, it's a spot too. I mean, this school superintendent earlier this year was asking us to solve problems on that street. And we had no solutions for them.
With regard to.
The traffic.
Understood, understood.
And that's, you know, happens to be the location too.
I, I get that. I, I will say that.
Things that you, I will say that from, you know, outside that you're just kind of walking to this spot. It's right, but.
Yeah, I, I will point you back to the traffic study though and to take a look at it. I don't, I don't even know the folks who put it together. I've never met them in my life. They're third party professionals.
All you have to do is go down there and they'll tell you. Two o'clock and like five o'clock when the dealers are stopped at the, for ten seconds, severing.
I don't dispute for a second that it's a problem. What I'm telling you is we don't, we don't exacerbate it and stopping us doesn't, doesn't solve it. Is, is my point because of the times that you're going to see the limited traffic you're going to see from us and the times you're going to see those traffic. It's not going to notably change anything.
Excuse me, and it is no joke, as Mark has said, you cannot make a left hand turn in Baldwinsville. So anyway.
I just, I don't disagree with that at all. I'm sure you folks know that much better than I do. You've been in the traffic, I'm sure. But my point is more that we don't impact that one way or another is my contention, I suppose.
Dick, Nate, any, you have anything else you want to add or?
I, I, I've actually, I like the project and the concept, the concept of a project. I really do. I think that, like you said before, like you said before, I think that the low income and developmentally disabled people, they need to have an outlet to be able to, you know, to, to get housing. I, I completely agree with that. And I think that that is something that is really good with this project. I just think we also have to think of the, you know, the residents around there and their, and their, and their concerns and everything like that. That's, that's big for us too. So it's just, yeah. But everything else that the other trustee said is, is accurate as well. So it's, 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 it's a tough spot. It really is. But as far as the plan is concerned, it's a really, really good project. I think it's a really nice thing that we could have in the village somewhere. If it's not here, it's somewhere else. That'd be nice to be able to have for us because My Crown is right down the road. And, you know, like you said, we're going to need a bunch more of these types of housing and stuff like that's, you know, spread out throughout the entire Southern New York region. So.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't want to cut anybody off. If there's no other comments, we have a motion in front of us. The motion is to change the zoning from R1 to R2.
Reject the motion.
Do you think, yeah, there's been enough community stuff. We'll do a roll call. Do you call them?
Callants?
Uh, Nate.
Trustee Seaco?
Nate.
Trustee Scubbins?
No.
Trustee O'Dowd?
No.
Trustee Shepherd? Trustee Ronco?
No.
Motion not carried.
Very good. So as you expected, the R2 has been turned down.
Not a problem.
So at this point, the ball's back in my mind, unless Bob corrects me back in your court.
Right, there'd have to be an application to change to Plan Development District.
Would, would we be able to entertain that vote today? I was under the understanding from our last meeting that what would happen today was we would vote down the, well, you would vote on the R2, presumably vote it down based off the discussions we would have, we'd had, and then there would be a vote on PDD. Just from a timing perspective in terms of us making decisions on control for land and, and things of that nature. Unless there are, if there are other concerns that it would take time to research, I'd be happy to delay for that purpose.
That's right. Now, now I think, I, I think what the board said was that they would not take a vote, but look at a consensus as to whether or not it was worthwhile to even proceed forward.
Right.
And the board could give direction that they would, I mean, again, the issues are whether the objections of the neighbors could be overcome, whether a project could go in there and be modified such that it would be, the, the benefits that a project brings, bring, would be able to overcome any of the issues that were involved because the, through working with the planning board, that could be, that could be taken care of. And as opposed to saying that regardless of what can be done, we don't want it in there. And we're, we're not going to want any development in there anyway. You know, so I, I think as was mentioned the last time, that, that the applicant doesn't want to have their time and expense wasted if, if the board feels that there's no way under any circumstances that, that the Plan Development District could possibly be approved.
So should I have a public hearing? Because we can't vote on that.
No, we want to give them an indication whether it's worth their time.
So how do you do that without a vote? Just a discussion?
I think we just had that discussion at some extent, but.
Not, not, not to the PDD though.
I certainly did, but I got the, the sense that both Mike and Meg expressed openness to the right project.
What we saw originally could be crafted with the planning board to be something that's more acceptable to the residents.
And I like the fact that the chair of our planning board has been at our meetings, so kind of knows where this board is leaning at least, and could take that into consideration in dealing with the developer. We need to have, there's six of us, so there's got to be at least.
Will the mayor have it say or not?
The mayor is, he can't vote unless he's going to come down here.
But we're not voting.
Right.
So it's just, it's just a.
But I think we need to have at least three trustees that are open to the option of a PDD, consideration of that.
And without. I don't think we're going to learn anything new. So I think it's out of respect to the, you know, to CDS, you know, you guys have presented the plan. We have a good idea.
I don't know if we're at the point where it's not, if it's three to three, does it go away? Because we're not voting, but if we're.
No, I'm just saying if there's three trustees that are open to it, that at worst case is a tie vote and a mayor. We can drag him down here and make him cash the tiebreaker.
So does the mayor have to be physically present to vote? Is that the local? So just so I can have an understanding, because I have to, you know, I have to advise the COO of my organization on some pretty big financial decisions in, in the very near future, very near future. What, what is our process and timing for a formal decision on a PDD? Because I was under the understanding that the R2 would be amended tonight so that we could vote on that. I thought we were on the cusp of that last meeting and that must, may have been my misunderstanding.
We can't do anything with a PDD without a public hearing. So I would say, and then correct me if I'm speaking on a term. We schedule a public hearing, we revisit this in two weeks, and that's the best you can, you can ask for.
So we schedule a public hearing in two weeks?
Well, the public hearing has to be after the PDD is been created, right?
Could be referred to the planning board to, to come up with, because the, the Plan Development District legislation really just has to describe what's there. Take a look at, at FOBs, for example. The Lock Street PDD we created, we created that based on what was going to go in there. And we had specific rules as to, as to the, the site plan. So I, I think that, that if they could come up with a site plan that the planning board is happy recommending, then, then that'll, that'll give the ground rules for the Plan Development District.
But you do all that before a public hearing on?
Yeah.
Yeah, the public hearing is on what the, what the design of the PDD is.
You won't have anything to have the public hearing on. That's why they call it a Planned Development District as opposed to just R1 or R2 where you, you, there are no rules other than the, the locations on yard size and that sort of thing.
So would we be able to have a formal vote today to send us, to formally send us to the planning board to engage in the PDD process?
Without an application or without a request, official request for, for a PDD, can we refer it to the planning board?
You can just go to the planning board.
We did that previously and I believe they sent us back because there was not a formal vote sending us there to give authorization for us to engage on the PDD. Is that correct, John?
I think the plug gets opened on that when we voted down your request of the R2. Maybe that was what it took for, for them to engage you with a PDD, that the R2 was off the table.
I'm using my words carefully. So the issue I think is, are there three, four votes that would ultimately approve a PDD use?
Regardless of what we look at? Because I can tell you that, I can tell you that I'm not necessarily going to.
Not regardless, but it's, there's a lot of work to do.
And I agree with that. That's why I think it should be back in your court. But I can tell you that what I look at now, I wouldn't vote for it. But if it's changed to things that I, some of the stuff we talked about, I would absolutely consider it.
I think it's not necessarily saying that you would approve it, but that you're open to considering.
Yep.
So what do we need to do to start that wheels in motion if it's going to move? We still don't know what everybody's.
There's nothing officially before the board right now. There's no, now that you voted that down, there's no pending application.
Right.
However, there's a verbal application and if you want, you could adopt a resolution referring the application to the planning board to come up with suggestions as to, as to what it might look like.
Which would indicate your openness and at least a majority openness to consider.
Making a PDD.
Well, I would make that motion.
Is that when the public, we would go to the, the board meeting, the planning board meeting?
I'll, I'll second it for a discussion.
Can't answer that, Sally. I don't know the answer.
Planning board meetings are open to the public.
And you can go to planning board. There eventually would be a public hearing, whether we would accept whatever came out of there or not. And you would attend that and express your support or opposition to.
There was a meeting at, at the planning board back in June or July. And many people showed up because it was easier to go to meetings in the summer. And everyone to a person that was there that wasn't on the planning board was against this because it would affect the neighborhoods so drastically.
And the project has changed since then.
But it's still, it, it's changed, but it hasn't. They still want to open Hyde Street. They still want to have, they're still going to be adding more cars.
That would, that's all, you know, this body isn't determining that. That would go to the planning board. And, and I don't know exactly, I'm not going to speak for what they're going to do.
It's like, we went to the planning board, there was a meeting, it was put back here. But now it's like they're pretending that meeting didn't happen.
If I could suggest this is out of order and there's a motion.
Yeah, discussion point, I'll speak to, I'll speak to that a little bit is you'll, you'll actually see where a shrub will be placed. You'll know the dimensions of every last thing once it gets to that level of a PDD, because the plan is that detailed. Once they go through that work. So that's what we have to decide tonight, you know, if we're going to make them go through that work. You know, it's, or something, and we got to see the plan then obviously. It's still got to be a good plan.
It's a big piece of land. And, and I don't know how anybody could say that you can't come up with anything that's going to be okay with the majority of people. If you, if you can't, you can't.
I, I, I think that, speaking on behalf of CDS as the developer trying to, trying to put this project together, our, our question today that we would like some sort of formal vote, if it's possible on, is the idea of a rental development for 70 units on this 15 acre lot, going through the PDD process. Is that something that just on its face, regardless of what the project ended up looking like, after going through that process with the planning board having the authority? Would any of, any or all of the respective board members just be adverse to that on its face, regardless of what the project ended up looking like? That's something that I genuinely hope we can get an answer to because it makes our decision much more difficult if we don't have that answer.
I would also point out to the board that this is an R1 district. And the village has the ability to, to approve a cluster development in that for an R1. And if that were to take place, you still would have cars, you would have people living there. It's a large, large area. And I don't know what, what the largest number of homes that could go in there, including two family buildings in our R1 districts. But there could very well be a substantial amount of cars and individuals there under its current zoning.
I would expect that the land will be developed at some day, at some point it will be developed. And no amount of NIMBYism will stop that.
But one thing I would say to that point is if we do go through the PDD process and we get approval for 70 units on those 58, on those 15 acres, then at no point could that be expanded until the board allowed that. At that point, you wouldn't have this open in the way that it's currently open on R1. Under R1, it's open so that if a developer did buy it, they're only limited by the restrictions of R1 for how many homes they can get on there as of right. If we do a PDD, we are strictly restricted as anyone else would be on that lot to those 70 units in the way that the planning board prescribed that we could build them. And there would never be anything more on that lot until the village board authorized it. So in that sense, you have more latitude under this framework. The authority of the planning board to lock something in that then means there are 70 units on this lot for the next 50 years at minimum.
The quandary that I think some of the board faces, and I'm looking at messages from the mayor, is that the last thing we want to do is to suggest go for it and then go ahead and then tell you no. If we already know, we're going to tell you no, because that's just not fair, wasting your money. So I think we need to figure that out.
There's a motion.
There's a motion.
And a second.
So is this a motion to?
Refer, the planning board for a PDD.
For a PDD. So this is a motion asking if the board members are opposed to a PDD consideration.
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So if this is a yes vote, then one would assume that barring you coming up with a horrible version of what you've already proposed, this board would accept that. And if we reject it, it's saying we won't accept apartments period over there.
I would, I can tell you with certainty, we would be pursuing 70 units and it would be an apartment style. That's. That's, outside of that, we would be working with the planning board and working at their direction for back-of-the-lot access points, heights, aesthetics of the building, all the things of that nature that you've already articulated.
So Bob, if we left it as an R1, okay, it could be probably twice as much as what they're proposing, possibly.
Possibly. I mean, if you, if you do, if the municipality in an R1 district has a proposal for cluster development, one of the things that the developer has to do is to come in with a proposal for how many single-family units, or how many, not single-family, but how many dwelling units could be put on that property, on that piece. I can't tell you right now, maybe Greg, but I can't tell you how many could actually be placed on that.
Our minimum lot size is just under a quarter acre, a quarter of an acre. There's not, you know, there's roadways, there's sidewalks, there's a huge ditch going through the property. You know, you might be looking at.
Fifty yards.
A smaller number of homes than units, but you're looking at the same amount of traffic, because those homes could have three, four cars.
And not, not.
Whereas these apartments might have no cars, so, or one car. So you may be looking at exactly the same or more than, or more traffic. So it just depends on how.
And I will stay.
We would own, right, we would have to maintain all of the infrastructure.
And at a much higher density as well.
It is.
Much higher density as well, in terms of the physical space that's occupied.
And when I visited the places I visited, I, I do agree that their numbers seemed accurate. I mean, all the parking spots weren't filled, and I, you know, they were similar type places, so I don't think they're lying to us about that. I'll just say that.
No, I can. We had our property manager go out and count it, because we had one in Sisro, and we were doing the second.
I sat there and counted it, too.
So we had him count it. Forty-five, I think it was 45, 46% was our number. They counted it for a month. I'm sure the property manager didn't like me that month, but they did count it every day for a month.
Roll call vote.
Call and question? Okay. Do you wanna roll call, or just like?
I think so.
Okay.
Trustee Ryanical?
No.
Trustee Shepherd?
Yes.
Trustee O'Donnell?
Yes.
Trustee Stubbs?
That's not an option.
Don't abstain, because you, you're the, it's a vote.
Oh, you can't abstain. That's a, you resign.
Would you let me?
Well, this is putting it all on Nate. I hear this, be careful what you're asked for. But I'm gonna say no.
Trustee Seco?
No.
Trustee Collins?
Let's see what you got. Yes.
I know it's not a portion of the formal vote, but if I may, could I ask the mayor's just informal opinion on that?
You can ask. I don't know if he'll answer.
At this stage, not. Can you hear, Dick?
No, you're breaking up a little bit.
He would like to know if you're willing to share your opinion, even though you can't vote. If you're willing to share how you would vote if you could vote.
What was the vote of your group?
It's three to three. So he wants to know if you'd be breaking the tie down the road.
I, I, I would vote no. I, I think the points were made, at the very beginning when we talked, on this first guy introduced, I said, well, it's a strange place to put a low-income apartment complex, not near anything, no grocery stores, no bus line, basically. I just feel it's kind of out of place. That's simple opinion.
So there you have that.
More confused than when we started?
You got a three to three.
So I guess it's up to you if you think you could come up with something that's gonna wow anybody, but you've got no, no decision really here.
Well, I think we did.
Under Robert's rules, the motion's defeated.
Oh, three to three.
Well, three to three is defeated.
All right. Well, appreciate the time and the transparency.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Yo, best luck to you, too.
Moving on to new business. A, could I have a motion to appoint Michelle Hamilton as the alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals at a rate of $50 a month, effective December 1st, 2022?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Item B, motion to award an emergency bid to Business Systems of Central New York in the quota amount of $7,850 to furnish, install, and repair the wires from the server in the clerk's office to the Justice Court and Police Department. This is a critical issue, as service has been interrupted for their computers.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. C, motion to approve the reallocation of the 2020 project bond and to pay the expenses as recommended by the treasurer in the attached documents. Get a motion. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Anybody have any questions regarding what the treasurer provided us? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Um, item D is a motion to receive the bids for the tree removal and trimming work project on Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, at 2:00 PM. Just to receive the bids.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody ask for any questions? Is everybody familiar with the bid? Oh, you've already voted, forget it.
They already received them.
Okay, you got them.
But now, but now you can share the one drop out.
Okay. We received two bids, and one of those, the low bidder, has since contacted our DPW superintendent and withdrawn his bid. So we're looking at a single bid, and the discrepancy between the two bids was so significant that I believe Chuck would like to go through the process of putting out the bid again and see if we can get better participation.
Right, we're just, and we can make some phone calls, and, and we'd just like to rebid it, if we can.
The numbers were so divergent, we have no idea if that sole bid that's sitting there is valid at all.
Did we vote on D? Are we, are we having our discussion in?
Right, it's a discussion. We won't even vote on it, because basically, we received the bids and it was decided not to.
Okay. But we didn't vote on D.
We, we received it.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You do a resolution, though, to, to rebid.
Do you want that tonight?
Give me.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to rebid the tree removal and trimming work project.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We voted on that one. Okay. Opposed? Carry. So there is no E, so a move to F.
Or that was E.
Oh, that was E? Thought it became G. Okay. If you're gonna try this again, gonna move to F. Discussion and action regarding the resolution supporting the grant application to the Anadide County Main Street Revitalization Program. Did everybody see, did Dick share that email with everyone? County has made a half a million dollars, $500 million. Is that what it was? Available grant money, much like we've had over the last couple of years, where commercial properties in the village could apply for facade grants or sidewalk improvements or whatever it may be. They could apply through our codes office, and they would be expected to pay, I think it's at a minimum of 25%, depending upon, this last time, we had so many applicants that number became smaller, they had to pay more, right? I think, yeah, they had to pay like 40% or even more.
Yep.
So, could I have a motion? Or do I need to read the whole resolution before?
You don't have to.
Whereas this is.
You can just read the motion that.
That Bob? Okay.
No, you don't need to read the whole motion. You could just repeat what you had said when you added it to the agenda.
Which I just read, so all I need is a motion. There you go.
The motion would be to approve the application for the grant and to designate the mayor as the representative authorized to act on behalf of the village regarding everything.
Nate says he's making the motion that Bob just said.
Then I'll second.
I got you, Bob.
I'll second.
You're getting a dirty look there, Nate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion is carried. Is there any other business before the board? Could I have a motion to pay bills as audited?
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Could I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:05?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all, folks.